Let's try that again. Good morning, everybody. We're going to call this special meeting of the Planning Commission to order and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all the commissioners are present. This is a continuation of our hearing from -- when was that? Thursday, May 30. And I know that planning staff had difficulty getting posted where we would begin today, but we are -- Peter's going to get us started, but we're going to pick up with going over the changes that we discussed on Thursday. Sorry. The days are starting to run together for me, so I'm sorry about that. But Peter, you want to go ahead and introduce today's agenda?
Sure. So a packet was sent out to the commission last night. I apologize for the late distribution. Hopefully, you had time to read it. I also -- there's copies up on the railing there that basically include several different things. The changes that the Planning Commission agreed to in the Conservation Open Space element shown in the underline and strikeout. Hopefully, I caught, captured all of those, with the exception of the air quality and oak woodlands sections. Those I just left as they were recommended when we started these hearings on the 22nd of May. There were three other documents that, one addressed the Resource Production Measure, RP 1E, discussing the farmland mapping and the land conversion issue that we've discussed for a while and hopefully have now reached the measure that works, or two measures that work. So I don't know if we want to just, you know, address that first before we jump back into Conservation Open Space. Then I have a set of policy and implementation measure revisions dealing with the air quality policies and measures, as well as a similar document talking about oak woodlands. There are a few other attachments to that, as the background information. Oh, and the last thing that was in there was the corrections to the footnotes in Table LU1 and the policy related to the future specific plan. So rather than have it as just an asterisk at the bottom of the table that might get lost, there's a direct reference to that policy in that table and set aside as a separate policy. So I'd like you to take a look at that and see if that sort of captures what the commission intended, to have a more clear description and the parameters of the future specific plan designation areas. So I know that the public hasn't really had a chance to review all of that yet. I don't know if you want to give them a few minutes just to, you know, at least have a chance to skim over it to see where those are, but otherwise, we can jump into -- I would suggest maybe we take up either the farmland mapping or the land use issues first just to wrap those up before we dive into the conservation element again.
I think that sounds good, and the public will get another opportunity to comment on these as we work through them. And then hopefully, we will get on to the next elements today.
Yes. I should mention that somehow I didn't notice that this had come in last night before I went to bed.
Well, and maybe the commission needs a few minutes as well to review the -- so I'll let you guys decide what you --
So what are you suggesting we take up first, Peter?
Attachment five.
The land use, the new policy regarding the future specific plan is the very last page of that packet.
Yeah, six.
LU 1.6. So previously, that was a note at the bottom of the table LU1, and instead of having that, it was suggested that that be a policy, expand a little more, very little more on sort of what the intent of with that land use designation, and then put in those same constraints that we had previously.
And should we also talk about the boundaries for the specific plan area that are in question on the map? The sawmill, there was a request to include some additional parcels, but we should take another look at that as part of this.
If that's what you'd like to do, yes. It looks like I did not -- I don't have that copied on the computer here. The policy of LU6 was missing, but it's on the last page of that packet, so everyone
Have the commissioners had a chance to read through the modified specific plan policy?
I have.
Does anybody have any comments to share?
Yes. I think it's fine.
Anybody else?
I agree. It looks fine.
Commissioner Maddish.
I'm still somewhat bothered by the fact that we're tailoring a land use designation to specific parcel numbers. I think what -- I understand that when -- what we're trying to do here, or at least the intent is, is that we have an area of land that, at least as contemplated in its development, you can't label the entire area as one land use designation and satisfy good planning practices for that area if it is indeed going to be developed as a mixed-use, recreational-based development. And so I guess I'm troubled, but I don't see any alternative to doing it the way that it's done here. I do have a question as to those four parcels that weren't included before. I'm concerned that in a land use area, or in the area of land use, where we're trying to deal with reduced population projections, we are including more land for rather dense development if we put in those four parcels. And so it's unclear to me exactly what the history of those four parcels were and why they were left out before. And so I assume, are those parcels mentioned within this LU 1.6?
They are not. The four parcels that we're talking about, it's actually four plus portions of the parcels. You see the arrow, one, two, three, and four, plus this portion of this larger parcel and this portion of this larger parcel. The rationale initially was that all of this here now is in a conservation easement and will be resource production when the map is corrected. We've got, you know, lower intensity land uses over here that this would be left as more of a transition between this existing development and what might be proposed for, you know, a recreation residential development in this area. If the requests by the commission last was to look at some of the constraints, and there's not one single area that is, you know, like a resource sensitive area. There are certain rare plants that are up in this area, you know, down along here. There is a sensitive -- the creek runs, you know, sort of from here down through here and, you know, down into the old canyon ranch area. That's a sensitive area. If the density allowance under this policy remains the same, it would not increase the number of residential units or lodging units that could be created. It would just allow them to utilize this other piece of property as a way possibly to redistribute those units, possibly avoid some of the other sensitive resources. So I don't have a real strong opinion, other than I'm, oh, this is not their property here. The other argument that's been made was that, you know, by possibly tying in some of the existing roads to, you know, this Beaver Road or somewhere else, that there might be, you know, better circulation and emergency egress and access. You know, again, the whole point of having the specific plan requirement is that we would look at those detail when a development actually occurs. What the general plan is saying is that based on surrounding land use patterns, access, those kinds of things, this would be an appropriate place for future development as opposed to elsewhere in the county. And by -- there wasn't anything that I could find based on all the past history of the previous project that was submitted and denied, that these parcels that were left out are any more sensitive than the parcels that were included. So if you wanted to add the existing, you know, the other parcels owned by the CB Development, I think it's called now, or I can't remember the name of the group that owns it, but Mr. Hicks's group, it wouldn't necessarily increase the overall numbers of units unless you were to change that number as well. It would just provide, it would just have perhaps a greater distribution of those units. Otherwise, with this being designated as rural residential, these could be conceivably subdivided into, you know, one to five acre parcels, depending on availability of services.
And what's its current designation under the present general plan?
Let me see. I think the bulk of the property is natural resources, land agriculture. So this area here is natural resources, land agriculture. This is community center, which allows a mix of uses or community region, and this is future single-family residential.
So the density under the current general plan could be similar to the density under rural residential?
Yes. No, well, actually, the current general plan has a much higher density than the rural residential designation as opposed, except obviously for these parcels over here.
But if LU 1.6 does not cover those parcels at this point, what would be your intent as far as?
Well, if the commission felt that it was appropriate to include all of the holdings, then we could simply add those APNs.
With similar language?
Well, we would just add it to the list of APNs for that at one bullet. It would still have the restriction of 580 total units.
One thing that overall that bothers me is just the designation "future specific plan" does sound like free pass. And I understand that if, I mean, the argument is, is that if this sort of development is going to happen anywhere in the county, this would be a place for it and that there are intense developments nearby. I know I would have an easier time accepting it if we had the land use designation be something like mixed-use, multi-parcel coordinated development, or something like that, that is, this is more like a land use designation than we're holding this for particular people. And anybody else?
I have a lot of comments on it.
Oh, good, good.
So you'll get sick of me quickly. I have the same, just a little bit of discomfort with the future specific plan name, and I know that that's silly because that's just a name, and whatever happens there is going to require additional review anyway with this designation, so I can get past that. I also don't have a problem with including the additional parcels because they weren't held out because of particular environmental sensitivities. I recall the proposed project on these parcels had a lot of environmental issues, little hurdles to get past, and I think that will still be the case. So whether we change the name and come up with a new name for it or not, I would like to see this element include some language that talks about any future specific plan is going to be evaluated based on these criteria, and that it will be expected to include a variety of things like open space, preservation of biological resources, public access to recreation, diversity of housing types. It'll be evaluated for its contribution to the community, to a sustainable economy. Does it prioritize elements that we need to improve or make the existing community more viable? Will it minimize the need for vehicle trips? And I think that this future specific plan designation is not intended, or in my mind, it's not intended to facilitate any particular project that we know about, but to identify an area that's appropriate for future development. And I think because we are calling these two areas by their previous names, we are muddying the waters here, and that that's not what we want to do. We want to look at, as planners, is this a place that we would encourage future development? And if we're going to encourage future development, what kind of development should it be? And so I think if we can focus on that and not think about, oh, well, the previous developer or this developer that's here today wants to do this, that's not our goal here today, is to facilitate what they want to do. Our goal here is to identify what's appropriate in those locations. And so I think that, for me, is really the big issue. So I'd really love to see some additional wording that would just direct any future development, give them a heads up, we're looking for all of these things. Your development should improve our communities, not just be more housing. So I think that's all I have to say at this very moment in time, and I hope that makes sense.
It makes sense to me. I appreciate your thoughts. I'm not sure how that, how we then would get to LU 1.6 that has specific parcels on it. I like your idea that let's define this land use designation.
Well, not by parcel. I am still saying, yes, call it either future specific plan, but say what that specific plan will be evaluated to accomplish, and go ahead and include all the parcels in it. I think that what has been proposed here in terms of densities is not unreasonable. And I think we just need to be clear that those are the maximum development potential of those areas. The feasible or reasonable development could end up being considerably less. We are not guaranteeing any developer that they will be able to accomplish that density, given all these other things that we think are important to accomplish with any development in that area. So sorry, Peter.
No, it's fine. Thank you. You were apparently reading a list of things that you would like to see.
I had scribbled my brain dump list here of things, which I will be happy to type up.
Certainly add those kinds of parameters, a sort of including but not limited to list of things that we are expecting to see out of these future specific plans.
And any other future specific plans that might eventually be designated.
Right. You know, things like connections to the existing roadways, trails, bike paths. There's an existing commercial development just right nearby. We don't want people hopping in their cars and driving there. You know, the point of allowing development in this area is to get it close to where those
So I'm not troubled by the name. I think it's actually helpful because it makes it clear that there's nothing specific approved yet. I'm also, I think that the idea of including a list of the factors that will be considered in evaluating any specific plan that's presented will include wisdom. I think that's probably a good idea.
I agree that that lays out the expectations that we want to see in this area, so I do agree with the list.
I think this would also apply to the other area that we were speaking of. It's just we're looking at this.
And any other specific plan that might be proposed.
Right. Right. It's a more generic.
Yeah.
And I would add the four parcels, for reasons expressed.
I'd be very interested in your being able to develop this further with Peter.
Well, if maybe you could send me your list, and I'll, you know, I'll come back tomorrow with maybe a refined version of that.
I think she just did.
I can probably clean it up and email it to you, though.
That would be great. And I can work on the language of how to include that into his policy.
So I'd like to give the public an opportunity to comment specifically on the items we just discussed, and if you have any ideas for improvements on what we've been discussing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tom Hicks, CB Development Partners. I don't have a problem with anything that you suggested, quite frankly. I think the goal here for this specific property here is that it is adjacent to commercial and having potential to have, you know, golf carts or electric vehicles to commute over to the commercial area, I think, is what we have planned with respect to the four parcels. We have the benefit of millions of dollars that have already been spent on this property, understanding what's there biologically and the entire environment of that site. The purpose of including the four parcels is not to increase the density, but simply to plan everything together so that as a component of the specific plan, we can have a larger percentage of open space. So if you include those parcels, from a percentage standpoint, your open space is going to increase, which I think, quite frankly, for the county, is helpful in setting a precedent for future specific plans, so you can have additional open space in that plan and possibly even have a requirement of a certain percentage of open space. So I don't have an issue with anything that you suggested, so I'm fine. But I think it's important to include those parcels so that they all can be planned together, both from a circulation standpoint, utilities, and for uses. The density that's proposed, that Peter Maurer suggested, we don't have a problem with either. The goal would be, again, to concentrate it up into the northern portion of the property and to avoid those environmentally sensitive areas. But again, having all those four parcels included allows us to do that and create a larger percentage of open space. Thank you.
If a person buys some property a hundred years ago, 50 years ago, 25 years ago, as they continue ownership, they may have ideas about the options that they would like to do with their property. And I believe that this does not make allowances for that. People, the county has allowed properties to be subdivided, and they've allowed properties to be subdivided, and now you're saying that you can have .48, .048, or whatever it is. People on their property is not understandable. It's not comprehensible. And I specifically am referring to -- have a page number? I'm looking for it here. Well, it's Rural Residential B, and I'm sorry that I can't find exactly.
Let me interrupt you. We're talking about the future specific plan, land use designation on there, not the rural residential.
All right. Well, the thing about it is, is that that affects it. And so I'm maybe ahead of the game, but I'm not, you know, that I don't think that's fair to allow people to subdivide property years and years and years ago and then take away the potential of that property for things that may be important for our county and for other people that visit here. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to weigh in on this?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with My Valley Springs and the Calveras Planning Coalition. Wish we had had this ahead of time so we could have studied this, but on the spot, three points I'd like to make. We do not support the addition of those four parcels to that area. Those are biologically sensitive. I believe I sent the commissioners some U.S. Fish and Wildlife comments on the project when it came before them before, and they were concerned about the setbacks from when it came before them before, and they were concerned about the setbacks from the creeks and the riparian and the lake and the ponds, and those parcels are involved in that. I did Google them, and there's also existing homes on, I think, at least three of those parcels. So they're developed parcels, so I'm not sure what the point of including them as potential open space would be, because there are already homes on three of those parcels up above there. That's my first point. I don't recommend those, addition of those four parcels. Second point, the idea of replacing the name, future specific plan, with another mixed use category, I totally support. I think the future specific plan gives the impression that this is going to be a future development. And the idea of the mixed use, whatever Tim said, mixed use slash the description, would be suitable as a future land use development. And this could also apply, Peter, to Tuscany Hills. We talked about that on your map. It's shown as a specific plan, and it is not a specific plan. Tuscany Hills is a tentative subdivision tract map. It is a mixed use development. It's got a golf course, it's got homes in it, but it can't be called a specific plan. It's not. So you need a land use designation for Tuscany Hills. That could be this mixed use category, which could also be applied to these parcels you're talking about under future specific plan. I like the option of that name and a whole different description that does not call out a project by name, or any specific parcels even, just this land use designation for future development that would have to go under the normal EIR process and review. Especially the Table Mountain property, which is called Saguenetti. We've been calling Saguenetti anyway. I've looked at that property. That is, the majority of that property is Table Mountain. It's rocks, it's steep slopes. We don't believe it's suitable for this kind of intense, dense resort development. There might be a hundred or so acres of it that could be developed, but 900 acres of it is mountain. And it's the beauty of the area, it's the resource of the area, and we just don't feel it's appropriate for development. And it's inappropriate to label that at this point in time. It should go through the regular planning process. Thank you.
Don't we already have a mixed use designation?
We actually have two. It is on page.
Just, it's not appropriate to this.
LU 8. Historic Center and Community Center.
But they're not called mixed use.
Well, they're under, the header is mixed use land. So those are the two mixed use designations that we have. The intensity and density of use in those areas is much greater than what we've identified as potential development for both of those sites. And that was the reason why we didn't just put the mixed use designation on it, was because we were saying, well, it's suitable for some future development, but not at, you know, 20 units an acre, or, you know, with flora ratio of 2.0 for commercial development. And it was based on a desire by the landowners who presented at the planning commission two years or three years ago now, that said, this is what we'd like to do with our property. And it said, that makes sense, and it fits in with the concept of the general plan. But we don't want to just say, okay, it's good for mixed use, and then we don't know what might be coming out of it. We'll identify these as sites appropriate for future development, but we want to put some constraints on it. And those, the concept of what they had seemed to work for those sites. And so that's why those constraints were put on it. I think that if we were just identified as a mixed use, that would significantly increase potential development and increase environmental, potential environmental impacts. And so I think going down that road would be inappropriate unless there's some way that we say, let me analyze the impacts based on those constraints.
Well, that's why I was suggesting not just.
Yeah, we're trying to, go ahead. I think we're trying to come up with it, the same sort of constraints that we've been talking about, and just a title that doesn't imply that it will necessarily be a specific plan, because it's possible that in the future, there would be multiple landowners of those parcels, and each one of them might have some.
I am suggesting that we want to have it as a specific plan, so we can look at it comprehensively.
I understand that.
Then we have the potential for just piecemealing of development of that and not getting what we want.
But are we creating a problem? We can't force different landowners to.
Well, they're all in common ownership at this point in time.
Create one specific, excuse me?
It's all in common ownership.
Now, that's not our call, that whether that will be in their common ownership in the future.
But someone who buys a portion of that property will need to know that, and they're going to need to work with the other property owners to develop it comprehensively.
So that's a reasonable expectation, is that?
It is reasonable, it is common with county general plans where you have potential for future development. You don't know exactly what it is, but you want to make sure that it is a controlled, you know, comprehensive development of an area, and not just, you know, subdivision here, subdivision there. I've dealt with the latter, and it's not pretty.
Yeah, no, I understand the goal. That's my sense in including the four parcels, is it's an opportunity for all of that to be planned together. And I don't, even if those particular parcels are particularly environmentally sensitive, I think we want to apply our requirements for buffer zones and protection of biological resources to everything within that specific plan, or whatever we're going to call it, area. So I don't see that, putting those parcels at any greater risk than they are today. I also don't think it matters whether they have an existing home on them today or not, because they could be further developed in the future, no matter what. You know, whether we include them in this specific plan, or whatever area, or not, so.
I was not suggesting that the designation just be mixed use. It was mixed use with further description of what you have in mind as far as this coordinated, taking all the parcels and then viewing them as a whole, and making a plan that works for the entire area, which would include some open space and protection of this and that and the other. I was just trying to come up with a name that, and what I did, came up with, was mixed use, and then a little hyphenated phrase, multi parcel coordinated development. That's awkward, but the idea is to come up with a description of what you have, of what the county has in mind here. I guess just calling it a possible future specific plan doesn't, wouldn't do it either. The problem is, you know, future specific plan sounds like something's already in place. There's a specific plan, and it's in the future, and here it comes.
I actually think if it says future specific plan, it is telling people, guess what? You're going to have to submit a specific plan, and it's actually going to hold that property owner, whether it's an individual or coordinated, whether there's multiple owners or not, that they will have to coordinate that development, and that there will be further review and analysis of it.
That's particularly true when you include your list.
Yes. I think the one fly in the ointment that I see is that we're giving some densities that are for that entire area, and if it was to be under separate ownership and developed in a phased way, how would we allocate that density without an overall plan?
Well, I think that by designating it as future specific plan, or whatever name we come up with, that anyone who decides to buy a portion of that property, you know, they're going to be put on notice, that, you know, they're going to have to work with it, and I would be surprised if anyone would buy just a portion of his property. Unless they then tend to come back with a general plan amendment and change it to something different, which then we would look at it at that point in time. We would say, no, this is what you bought, and we expect you to work with the rest of the owners here to develop a comprehensive plan that works and meets all of our criteria.
I think we've adequately discussed this. I'm not troubled with the name, future specific plan. I'm not troubled with adding the four parcels. I think it's the right thing to do. And I think that the list that Ms. Platt needs to come up with is appropriate. The developer thinks so too. I think we should come to a consensus on this and move on.
So let's poll the commission.
I'm in favor of adding the four parcels, keeping the name, future specific plan, adding the list that the chairperson has come up with as factors that will be considered, that we'll be looking at, and call it good.
I agree with everything except for the wording of the title. But with the list, everything's been discussed now. I agree, as long as it's coordinated, has the specifications that the property owner, whoever it may be, are aware of, that this is in place. I don't have a problem with it. I'm good with it. The name, I'm kind of lukewarm on the heading, but one way or the other, as long as it's spelled out, and everybody's aware what's going to take place, what needs to take place, I'm good with.
I wouldn't go to, on the map. I won't, I mean, I'm a minority, so I won't fight on the name. I just think that it provides an unfortunate connotation, even though I understand from a planning standpoint, it's actually a limitation. It's saying, look, this land is set aside for a specific plan, and if you're not interested in making it a specific plan, including the type of concerns you have on your list, why we're not interested in having you come forward with the development. So I'll withdraw the name problem. I know we're polling, but I'm not sure. Are we polling on having a general description along the list that you're?
Two items, the addition of the four parcels, and including some, a list of criteria that we'll be evaluating any future specific plan against.
Okay, for that, I have no objection. My question is, how do you define this land use designation, and with the list that you're talking about? And then in LU 1.6, seemingly limit the two particular parcels, are we saying this is going to be the only future specific plan?
No, no. Our list of evaluation criteria, I believe what we've all been discussing, is generic to any future specific plan.
So I have some, maybe some draft language that we can add. Future development of these sites and other specific plans that may be proposed shall include provisions to enhance the community in which it is located. Factors that the county will expect to be included in a specific plan shall include, but not be limited to, and we will list those factors.
But then, how does?
Perfect.
That sounds great. How does that tie to LU 1.6 where it says a specific plan? Oh, by the way, here are these particular parcels. I like the idea that you're having a maximum development capacity on these parcels. But this all turns, seems to turn right back to, well, we're really only talking about this.
We are right now, because I think that Colleen has identified something we need to come back and look at, is that the other parcel that is identified as a specific plan, but which is existing and is not. So we do need to come up with something. That's a different issue, because right now, we only would have these two areas that would be identified as future specific plan areas. But if in the future, the general plan was to be amended, it's possible that we would have other future specific plan areas, although I think it's way more likely somebody would come in and just say, I want to create a specific plan on this parcel. So that might argue for us coming up with a different title, even though it seems a little bit like we're just doing this to make ourselves feel better. But I think it might be more appropriate, even if we identify in the description for that title, that this could be a future specific plan area. Maybe we do call it multi-use coordinated development or something.
I think identifying it as a future specific plan tells you that it's not an adopted specific plan, because we have an adopted specific plan, the Saddle Creek Project. We may have some other specific plan that gets adopted in the future, which at that point in time, the land use map would change to show adopted specific plan. Same thing, if these were to be developed, they would become adopted specific plan as opposed to future specific plan. I think the name actually makes sense. You know, anytime that we designate undeveloped land, something that has a higher potential for development than it currently is, we're saying, this land is appropriate for that use. We've carved out these two as being somewhat unique because of the sensitivity of the sites, and the desire to have something, not just more houses, you know? And so I don't know of any other way that we can really do that. We could come up with another name. I don't think it's going to be any more descriptive or helpful in the future to someone who is buying that land. And we're saying, these are the two sites. These are the areas that if you're going to develop here, here's what we expect, and it's going to be developed under a specific plan sometime in the future. So I'll leave it to you, but I can't think of anything that's more descriptive than what we already have.
May I ask a question? In LU 1.6, if you just put in the word currently between land and designated, so you say, land currently designated, future specific plan on the land use map, blah, 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 then you have the specific, those specific parcels listed, then it would, to me, would make it clearer that we are, we're talking, we're really coming up with a land category of future specific plan. Right now, it's only designated in this particular, these particular areas. And I think what Colleen Platt pointed out, if there's another.
That's a separate side issue. I'll need to come up with some resolution on that. It's unrelated to this issue.
But anyhow, is there a problem in saying land currently designated in LU 1.6?
I think it's superfluous, but.
It's completely superfluous.
I think it's superfluous. It is or it isn't, so.
Well, okay. Okay. If you don't see my problem, I'm a minority one, I won't hold it up.
So we will come back with some, a little bit of work on this. We will live with an imperfect solution on the title. Sure, come on up and make a really great suggestion.
Tom Fasino, Calveras Planning Coalition. If I were, LU 1.6, land designated, mixed use constrained on the land use map is intended to provide land for mixed use, recreational base, new development, and shall only be developed after approval of a specific plan with the following maximum density and intensity of use. It would clearly say that a specific plan is required, and rather than sounding like you're giving something away, it sounds like you're actually constraining something. So if your goal is to sound less generous, or. So if your goal is to sound less generous, or, or more responsible or something, that's an option. But I agree with Peter that, I like the way it sounds now, but I'm just trying to get past this.
Thank you. That's actually a, a reasonable suggestion. I, I could live with the current designation or the, the alternative. I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I think it's all just.
I'd prefer what we have, for the reasons that have been expressed by the planning director.
I won't hold things up any longer.
Do we want to talk about the ag mitigations next?
I don't, I just wanted to note that we have the Air Pollution Control District Director here. I don't know if that changes the order for you guys. We've asked, you asked him to.
Yes. Do we, do we want to take a look at those items first? Thank you.
Sure, yeah, that time with me, whatever the commission desires also. Our consultant, who happens to have some expertise in air, air quality, is also here, so it might be good to jump into air quality discussion. We'd always come back to the resource production issue.
So let's look at.
So the edits that I'm suggesting are contained in Attachment 2 of the packet. There were a number of policies that were recommended. After looking more closely at this, I also realized that there were, the same policy language was also included as a implementation measure, and it really seemed that much of this language was more implementation measure oriented than it was policy. So I suggested that we basically simplify Policy COS 4.2, except 4.9 as, let me see That's a recommended by, in the EIR, and then the rest of the measures, 4.9 to 4.12, actually get incorporated into revised implementation measures. The way I've shown it here is the, if I remember, the underline and strikeout that was shown initially is, was what was, well, actually, I was all just double underlined. The, the underlying text was language from the EIR. The double underline is new verbiage that I've proposed, and the strikeout are also my edits.
Where, where are we finding the double underline?
So for example, 4.9, COS 4.9, in the middle of the first page, would be a new policy that sort of incorporates all of those implementation measures that, that were previously identified as being policy. So it's more a general expression of our policy that we're going to protect and enhance air quality account. And then the measures, which are, again, these were, were for the most part, measures that were proposed through the EIR as policies, they have then moved over into the implementation program component of the plan with some additional edits. Again, where it's just a single underline in those pages two and three, that was language that was proposed by the consultant.
Hang on a second. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm really getting muddled here.
Can you use some page numbers?
Yeah, okay. So on Attachment 2, there's three pages, 1, 2, and 3.
Attachment 2.
Of the, the document that I sent out last night and was handed to you this morning.
Oh, okay.
So, maybe I'll just walk through each one. So Policy 4.2 originally had just this simple sentence. There was additional language that was recommended to be added to the, to the policy by the consultant. I'm suggesting that that be removed from the policy and incorporated into an implementation measure. As we move down the page, I prepared a new 4.9, and then all of the other policies that were included, recommended by the consultant, I have proposed that they become implementation measures instead. So that takes us over to page 2 of that document. There have been some minor edits to several of those, so 5G, 5H, 5I were pretty much the same language with, with some edits that were made. And then, in fact, all, all of the ones, all, you know, through 5K were those previous policies that are now in implementation measures.
And where is your double underline?
So for example, on 5G.
Oh, I see. Sorry.
So it's, you know, it said, continue to implement emission reduction programs, and I've changed that to cooperate with the CCAPCD implement. So one of the concerns that was raised at the last meeting was, what is the relationship with the Air Pollution Control District and the county? And we've come to the conclusion, they are separate entities, even though the Board of Supervisors also serves as the Board of Directors for the Air Pollution Control District, they are separate entities, and the county doesn't technically have authority over the district. But we coordinate with them, we cooperate with them, we rely on their expertise when it comes to reviewing development projects and the potential air quality impacts associated with those. And so the language has been changed, you know, in a couple instances to clarify that, that we work with them, but we don't direct them to do things.
So do we have some specific questions, since the director's here?
I'd like to know if the director agrees with.
Has had an opportunity to, would you like to come on up to the podium?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'm Brad Banner, and I did reach out to the State Water Resource Board, or the Air Board, Resource Board, and an unofficial opinion from a high-level person there is totally consistent with Julie's analysis. Their official position from the manager is, talk to your attorney. They, they would not give an official opinion, but their unofficial one is, she was right on. And we definitely support these recommendations and will certainly work with you.
Thank you.
I have a, I have another question.
Oh, come back, don't sit down yet.
On a more general question, on, on meeting the state's greenhouse gas emissions goals for 2030 and beyond, does your agents, what, what is your agency's role in that?
All right. We have kind of a summary of our, what we do on the website, and then our, our error specialist has gotten a summary, and while we're sitting here, I developed my own little summary because I thought that question might come up. There's basically five elements of what we do. The first is permitting and inspection. You know, we do burn permits, a lot of, like 1,500 a year during the burning season. We do authority to construct, and the way that works, if you look in our rules, now our rules are on the state website, and we have a link to that in our county website. And that's pretty true across the state, so we have this plethora of rules. And basically, for the authority to construct, it says anything that will create air pollution. And then the second rule gives a list of exemptions to that. But that's one of our functions, and we're not talking about a huge number of these, about six last year.
No, I'm sorry, but just, I'm not quite sure what, when you say these, could you give me an example of what you're talking about?
Like a curtain burner for burning wood, a generator, a large generator, 50 horsepower. We have, if there's authority construction, you know, where there's a steel mill in Angels Camp, if that was being proposed, we do that. And a lot of this gets over our expertise, so we have an engineer that we can use, and our fee structure is set up so that we can bill the opponent for that.
And this is, this, you, you have the authority to say yea or nay?
Yes.
For this particular type of construction?
Yes. And SEQA may be involved too, so. And then we have permits to operate, and we've got the gas stations, all the, all the gasoline dispensing units, the vapor thing in the nozzle, we inspect those. Got 14 quarries, 10 manufacturing facilities, got the landfill. So that's kind of our permit to operate. And then with all this needing to do prescribed burns for, to, to kind of get this fuel reduction process going, we, we are required to do smoke management plans. And so we work with CAL FIRE and the other entities to look at what's going to be done to verify that the weather conditions are correct, that there's notification to people that might be impacted come out of that. Then we have these incentive programs. You've listed some, CARL, which is a, CARL Moyer, which is a, a very, it's $200,000 a year program, and the money for that comes from the smog fees and from buying new tires. That's, that's funding source. We have a brand.
What is the CARL Moyer program?
It's a CARL Moyer Memorial Fund, and it was this program set up to incentivize people to replace, like, school buses, to replace their engines when they aren't actually required to by law. So it's, it's getting ahead of the curve. And the interesting thing is, and this is, it's a lot of money, and it's all through the state, coming from those sources, and the state air board, they actually, there's requirements that go with it. You have to use that equipment and verify you've used a certain amount. They actually measure the reductions in emissions and quantify that. So it's a pretty impressive program, and it's been one of the more successful ones. And so we've worked with school buses, large vehicle engines and things like that, where we can, it, it partially funds the replacement, and then the old unit has, you would drill holes in the engine and make sure that it's inoperable again. So a brand new program, we're coming to the Board of Supervisors this coming Tuesday called the Farmer Program, and it's very similar to the CARL program, and it comes from, the money comes from cap and trade, and it, we, we're very collaborative. And so in this particular case, the state has money. Placer County Air District got a contract with the state, an agreement with the state, and a number of counties, including ours, are going to Placer County to fund a replacement of some engines, and it doesn't pay, it pays up to like 60%. So there's a, a logging company, Sullivan, that is, that does these fuel breaks, these fire breaks, and we're proposing that that get partially funded through this program if the board adopts it. So that's a good, and then we have the Woodstow Program. Unfortunately, it's going to be smaller this next year, but that's a pretty cool program too, where it funded actually the total replacement of the Woodstow, if you're either located in an area that's mapped low income, or you show that you're a low-income person. And if you're not, it still gives you some funding, like a couple thousand dollars. So it was, that was a super program, and I hope we can do more. So those things actually are designed to reduce.
So I, I understand, a lot of admirable programs were reducing.
Yes, and all these together work to.
To, to help limit things, but what I'm, I'm, it's unclear to me exactly how the state's program is coordinated with the local program as far as these goals of reducing greenhouse gas consumption by 40% over what was in 1990.
Oh, I see.
By 2030. It is, does the state coordinate with you in any respect on what's going on here?
And mandate, coordinate and mandate. The US EPA is the mothership, and the state has to meet the EPA's requirements, so there's a state implementation plan. We have to meet, and we contribute to that implementation plan, so that's kind of how it's coordinated through the state.
Because, you know, we're, we're trying to come up with, with something in our, in our general plan that would, certainly would, we want to reflect what you're doing, but it's hard to know what the mechanics are.
Yeah.
You know, so we're not just creating greenhouse gases of our own and spottulating, espottulating what we think should be done.
I think he's telling us that he's going to implement the programs that we come up with are mandated by the state or are mandated by the feds, rather than develop those, although you would have input into the development of whatever reduction plan we come up with to tell us whether it's practical or not.
Yes, it's pretty much a team effort, as you can see, because there's so many sources, so diverse, and so I think these mitigation measures here really are in sync with what we do and what our role is. And then in doing that, we are meeting the state implementation plan, which they have to have approved by the federal EPA.
But do you have any more specific mandates from the state that, well, you're not doing enough, you have to?
We have to do this emission reporting to the state, and thank goodness, they started giving us a little bit of money to help defray the costs, but we, we do our reporting to the state. Some of that, if you don't do the reporting, they'll actually take away your road funds. So we wouldn't want that to happen. So we have actually adopted some rules that were directed by the EPA through the state.
For emission reporting, and, and is this, this is reporting emissions that are being generated within Calaveras County?
Yes, yeah, and new source, new point sources. And we don't have a lot, by the way, because there's thresholds on these, and we're just a little county. We aren't even generating this, the pollutants. We're the receiver of the.
I understand that.
So we're doing our part, but it's, it's almost, we go through a lot of work and develop these rules at the mandate of the, of the federal government, and we don't even have any industries that create the level of output that qualifies. But nonetheless, we may someday.
But you, you have a, a recognized way of reporting total greenhouse gas emissions within Calaveras County?
There are a number of reporting databases that are actually the, the state is working on to improve now. So yes, we do reporting, I'm not sure if it, I don't think it does, you know what? I don't think it does all sources. I think it picks out the big ones, and the state continues to monitor air quality, and I don't think there's so much going after small pollutants.
But the, the state, the state has no problem with your current reporting procedures?
Right, no, we're totally in sync with them, and we're working with all the other air districts to actually improve some of the reporting procedures and reporting systems. And we've gotten a grant for that recently.
And do these take in all, I mean, is this, are you reporting to the state the Calaveras County's greenhouse gas emissions? I mean, is that?
I don't think it's phrased that way.
Okay.
I don't think they're that far along with this whole program yet.
No, I know, I just, I just wanted, trying to get an idea of what, what is acceptable to the state, and that you're the, you are the reporting body for what the state is looking for as far as greenhouse gas emissions in Calaveras County.
Right, and we have like one air monitor that does ozone and PM10 in San Andreas for whole county. So that goes into the state system too.
Okay. Well, you're doing a great job.
We do our best. It's a very small, it's a very small district. We have one specialist. My role is mostly to support him do his work, you know, and so, and, and work on the fiscal end of things, and it's a very small, and we, we have to be self-supporting. Our budget from year to year is nip and tuck, so. So, um, we do our best. We try to pull in grants to support what we do and enhance our program. It's not, some counties have these major programs with, you know, a room full of staff. We don't. It's one person basically, supported by me and some of our permit texts.
So there's been a lot of talk about, um, using biomass for co-gen here or coming up with something to do with our humongous amounts of trees that have been cut down. That could become a challenging, um, project for you?
Well, it's something that we really want to see happen and we really need it badly in our county. And so when the project comes along, we do our best to work with them, take them through the process. Sometimes CEQA's involved and, um, some project proposals have been made and they've petered out, but, um, yeah, that's-
But are, do you feel like there's good direction, good technology, good, um, feasible measures that can be taken to make that actually-
Yes.
-work for us to be a net positive?
It is definitely possible, yes.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
If somebody comes up with, I suppose, a request for an authority to construct something that may emit toxic air contaminants, TACs, does your district have the authority to tell that applicant that they can't place this thing they want to build here because it's too close to a sensitive receptor?
I think that's part of, the authority to construct, part of the review that takes place.
Okay. And then more generally, looking at these various air quality implementation measures, a lot of them seem to say that the county will require the developer or whoever to comply with your district guidelines or your district rules and so forth. And I guess my question is, is that creating some duplication of effort or is that helpful?
I think it's helpful because when we have a situation like that, um, you know, we're one floor below the planning department, we usually see Peter or Gina and we work with them. And so there's, I don't think there's duplication. I think there's coordination with them or fellow workers, you know.
Thank you.
Can you, uh, tell me what asbestos airborne toxic control measure would be or a sample of that would be?
Of a toxic control measure?
A asbestos-
Oh, 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 it's like, um, wetting down the, you know, there's this serpentine-
Yeah, I'm aware of it, I was just, I was just curious-
And if we get involved in those, they're, they, they need to provide a plan for controlling the dust basically and holding the dust down and then making sure that the building that takes place isn't going to expose people to that asbestos. That's a pretty serious thing we have, so.
Okay, I was just, I was just kind of curious of the extent of what a control measure would be other than add some, go on dish, put some water and spray it on the ground. I mean, if, maybe the extent of it, I mean-
It's app plus some planning. They get somebody to do a, a, a plan for that so that's coordinated and it's assured that it happens. But you're right, water is the biggest thing on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Peter, before?
I don't know, if you have any questions with me or Rod, who helped create some of these, um, these policies, these measures.
When do you want to hear from the public on this?
Right, just about now. I was just going to give you guys an opportunity to ask Peter any questions and we're ready. Okay, would anybody like to speak to this issue and to the proposed modifications?
Thank you, Tom and Fasino, Calaveras Plan Coalition. Um, the, moving these from the policies to implementations is just fine. The only issue we've had with these, um, center around, um, what's now implementation COS 5F and, um, COF 5H. Um, as was mentioned, many of the projects, uh, here in Calaveras County are smaller. Um, and the fact that they're smaller, um, does not mean that they're insignificant in a cumulative sense. So if you look at, for example, COS 5F, it says, evaluate proposed discretionary developments subject to CEQA evaluation to determine whether they will emit criteria air pollutants exceeding greenhouse, including greenhouse gases exceeding CCA PCD standards. Those standards, uh, apply to large projects and so, um, you would get mitigation for a large project like a, I hate to bring up the term, but future specific plan, there would be mitigation. However, there may be 10 projects out there that would add up to the same amount of emissions as a future specific plan, but would fall under those guidelines and you would get no emission from, no mitigation from that. So, um, I'm hoping that as we move forward, you know, beyond the general plan to the practices zoning, oh, good, his pen's moving, I want to see Peter's pen. As we move toward the zoning ordinance and such-
And to our future greenhouse production plan.
And, yeah, we can consider, um, uh, simple, uh, mitigation measures that will be applicable to smaller projects as well so that everybody is contributing to, uh, the air quality improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commission.
I'm fine with the reorganization. I'm fine with the, um, the new policy and the new implementation measures. I was concerned coming in whether there would be duplication of effort and expense by doing this and I'm not concerned anymore about that. So I'm, I'm good with all this.
Commissioner Henderson?
I'm actually, uh, I like the, the, moving the policies over to, um, implementation measures. So I, I am good with the way it is.
I think the proposal's fine.
I agree. I do want to talk about, um, 5C a little more with the element that we talked about last week that Tim, Commissioner Lattish, had made some proposed modifications and I had volunteered to try to come up with a little list of potential mitigations and possibly some interim measures until we do have a greenhouse gas reduction plan. And, uh, Peter, is this a good time to talk about this or you want to come back to it?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm gonna pass this out to you guys. And give this to the public and maybe we'll take a quick 10-minute break. You guys can take a look at this and then we're going to discuss it. It's sort of, um, just a bunch of ideas. It's not written up in a final format, but-
Here's for 5C, 10-5C.
Um, yeah, it's the implementation measure, COS 5C. It's, it's the greenhouse gas plan item that we spent a bit of time on last week.
Okay, we're taking a break?
Yeah, let's take a 10-minute break. You want to turn off our mics, please? I don't know. I don't know, it doesn't ever work for me. So I want to preface this with, this is just sort of a random or, or not so random list. I looked at what are the kinds of things that I think are likely to get looked at? We don't know what's going to come out of a study and a plan, but there are kind of three areas that I contemplated in my ignorance of actually much about this. Um, one is what are simple measures that are likely to, to come out of this? Two, what are the planning-related things that, that this body could be looking at? And three, should the county be taking a leadership position in this and leading by example perhaps? So you'll kind of see that. It's by no means an exhaustive list. I think everybody's going to take a stab at this and change all the wording and do whatever, but, and we have people here who know a lot more about it than I do. And then I looked at, shouldn't we take a stab at some of these simple things and the planning things right now? Why would we wait two years if we know this is coming? We should be at least looking at how we could mitigate our greenhouse gas emissions right now. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and let the commissioner speak. And then we'll get the experts to weigh in and then we'll let the public weigh in.
Well, um, I'm, I'm troubled by the drop dead date. I'm troubled by any drop dead dates, but this one in particular, by the end of calendar year 2021. You know, we have to develop the emissions inventory to establish baseline levels of GHGs generated from all emission sources in the county. That may well be doable. It sounds like it's being done now. But you have to have the reduction plan done. That I am not at all sure can happen. This was discussed the last time and there were concerns expressed about that. And then going on down the list, I'm, I have a problem with the all-electric. Um, you know, when the power goes out and you're all-electric, that's not good. The power's supposedly going to go out more often now than it has been because PG&E is taking the position that they can shut it off to avoid the potential of wildfires coming off their power lines. I'm kind of not clear where this, all this power's going to come from. Something has to generate it. You only have so much hydro and solar and there's a lot of people that prefer propane for cost reasons, because it's reliable. You know, a tree doesn't fall in a propane line. Um, and I don't think that it should be the business of the county to deprive them of that choice. Maybe that's just me. With respect to vehicles, I can see serious cost issues here with respect to requiring an electric hybrid. Maybe that gets fixed with the qualifier when feasible because feasibility takes into account economic considerations. And there will probably be people at the county who could speak to that with more credibility than I have. And I have the same issues with respect to the interim proposals. Um, with respect to the one wood burning appliance, um, per residence, that's already required by the Air Pollution Control District. That's one of their measures according to DEIR, page 4.3-24. And I'm not sure that it's always workable to require new residential communities to be located within walking distance of services such as parks, banks, grocery stores and restaurants or include parcel zone for commercial development. I just don't know that that works everywhere.
I, I think we've done that with our, actually with our land use designations that spend the attention.
That may be, in which case this would be superfluous. Um, I think those are my comments at this time. You know, we haven't had a lot of time to study it. And just generally speaking, personally, I would prefer to leave the details of what's going to be in a reduction plan to the people who are going to be hired and, and who know more about it than, than I do. I think that's the right place to come up with measures that should be included in a greenhouse gas reduction plan.
So I just want to point out that I just said those are things to be considered when they develop the plan, not to be included in the plan.
That's true, except for the interim.
Except in the interim, exactly.
Okay, um, I, 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 I believe we do need a drop dead date to, that way we can gauge the community's progress or the county's progress in meeting these requirements. Um, few of these, I, I feel uncomfortable with, with electric, the all-electric cooking appliances. Um, you know, we're trying to get away from fossil fuel, but propane and, and natural gas are the cleaning, burning, natural fuels that we have. And I think personally, I should have the right to make that choice and, and being that PG&E and the fire, wildfire situation, electric is, is, to me is becoming more unreliable than becoming reliable. Um, so I, I do feel uncomfortable with that. Um, the wood burning, uh, bullet point, I think that honestly, I think that's probably, wood burning in this county is probably one of the larger contributors of greenhouse gases, you know, besides all mobility use. So I, I think that it needs to be more stringent. I think it, when all other forms of heating are unavailable, so, um-
So I want to just, as somebody who deals with this, you can't, in this county right now, you cannot use wood as your primary heat source on a new building. That's just not, not allowed. So it's always a secondary heat source and it is something that a lot of people rely on at the upper elevations where, um, electricity is not always as reliable as. We'd like it to be in the winter, so-
No, I, no, I-
You know, I'm, I'm just saying that, that it, it's always a secondary heat source, but there are a lot of older homes where it is their primary heat source.
And then where new, uh, new residential communities, bullet point, um, community shower, I think is way too strong. Uh, I, I know our intent here is to develop the general plan to, um, develop communities where that it is easier to, uh, get to these facilities. However, shower is really strong. Um, I, I think wherever feasible may be a better fit, but I mean, that's my opinion. And, um, going down to, uh, I, I agree with you where the county vehicles should, uh, the county should take a leadership role in this. However, there is cost to, um, that and, um, but, I mean, that can be worked out with, um, maybe grants or something like that. Um, standards of offer of vehicles, motor, et cetera, I think that's, we're overstepping because I'm, I would say the federal and state government has, uh, um, requirements set forth already, so that's just, and then the one major thing that I have down here, burning of trash, that I think that should be, the county should prohibit that. That should be prohibited and limit the yard waste, burning of yard waste. That's, that's my opinion.
Well, I feel that, 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 in discussions with the chair, I think, I think unintentionally COS-5B was subsumed into COS- was subsumed into COS-5C. And I think having COS-5B, which was on page COS-25.
Yeah, right above.
Have I said the right? Anyhow, I think it's good to have two different things. COS-5B is to establish the baseline levels. And I think, I think we should have a deadline date, but and I think our council, outside council suggested a, some sort of language that is not truly drop dead date if you have made a good faith effort and somehow have not been able to comply or whatever. I think you had some language last week that you suggested.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as far as a drop dead date, I think we've talked a little bit, well, quite a bit about kind of the concept of feasibility and, you know, what is feasible to do and not. So, you know, I can't gauge what's on the county's plate and whether it's feasible to do that and whether the county can commit to that or not. That's kind of a decision that you'll have to make.
Well, I think what we want is, we want to be committed to it, but if the realities intrude and with all of our good faith efforts, we're not able to meet this deadline, we want to have a little fudge factor. And, but I think it's, I think it's important to have, you know, I guess what I'm asking you for is, I believe you had some suggested language that would indicate that we would need to make the good faith efforts, but if we didn't make it, why then?
Yes.
It's too late after as possible or something.
I think one option would be to include language along the lines of good faith effort or, you know, indicate that the goal is to have it done by a certain date. You know, the specific terms I don't think are, you know, that important. What the county wants to do, good faith effort, endeavor to, that type of thing. Again, it, you know, it's what the county is able to commit to based on a variety of factors, feasibility being a consideration.
So endeavor to complete?
With good faith efforts to achieve this by the end of calendar year so and so or something like that.
Well, I think we went through this last time and I did not prefer the phrase good faith effort because it's subjective and subject to misinterpretation and mischief, put it that way.
If Commissioner Rooster, there was going to be a date in here, do you have language that you would find to be less objection?
I would say endeavor to would be workable. Endeavor to do whatever you're going to do. Endeavor to develop blah, blah, blah by the end of calendar year.
Yes, by the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, so maybe they, both 5B and 5C, I think there was a proposal to endeavor to complete the baseline by the end of calendar year 2020 and then endeavor to complete the plan by the end of calendar year 2021. Is that what we've been discussing?
Is that?
Is that realistic?
Well, it's not only realistic, but it is, are we falling into the, into the criticism that we're not really committing to anything? You know, where we've changed so much in this, in this general plan away from make efforts to and this sort of thing to make requirements. I don't know if endeavor is good enough, but at least it would get a date in there. I think we're dealing with an existential threat here. We are dealing with something that really needs to be dealt with. And not only is the, is it, I think, an existential threat, we're dealing with a state requirement. And I think we have, we can't put this off until 2026 and then say, oh, well, now look what we have to accomplish in the next four years. So I think having, having dates that mean something is necessary. And I think it makes sense to do one date for the inventory and then one date for the for the reduction measures. So I guess I could, I could live with endeavor to by such and such by the end of calendar year 2020 to complete a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. If that's.
I would put the date as a separate sentence because we want to commit that we're going to do this. And so we'll say we will undertake the inventory and we'll prepare the plan.
Yeah.
Statement of fact, we're going to do this. If you want, rather than putting the date in that same sentence and it says, well, if we, we're endeavoring to do it, but we didn't do it, there's really not a strong commitment. So I would put that as a separate sentence just to make it very clear, we will do this and we'll try everything we can to get it done by that date.
How about we, yeah, we shall endeavor to accomplish this by such and such a date.
And actually put, I mean, I don't like by the end of, by the calendar. I like the hard date of December 31st, 2021.
So if we kept, I'm sorry.
I think there's agreement on that, that, and I think that the way Peter suggested saying we will do this and we will endeavor to complete it by 1231, 2020 and 1231, 2021. I think there's agreement that that's a good approach.
And is, can we use the phrase we shall endeavor?
We shall try really hard to endeavor to.
Typically don't say the county shall in front of these measures because it sort of implied that. And we actually stated in the introduction, when we say, you know, a statement, it means the county shall. So I think we just say endeavor to complete the inventory by December 31st, 2020.
Yeah, okay. So you have that, that sentence at the end of COS-5B?
Yes.
Then as far as COS-5C, I think you'd put that as the second sentence of the, of the measure. So it doesn't get lost.
I'm going to let Peter get those sentences in there. He's got the direction.
But I think it's.
I don't think we need to wordsmith it down that tightly at this point, on that portion.
I think it's, I think it's very important to have interim requirements. I'm not so certain that, that the list of things that should be in the, in the final plan, I tend to agree with Commissioner Rooster that we're saying this plan has to be developed and we all can tell whoever's developing that plan what our concerns are. I think I would, I would concentrate on the, on the interim requirements. I would be in favor of the all-electric requirement if, if the current situation were that electric was, was as guaranteed as it was two years ago. I hesitate to put that in as a current requirement now until we see just what in the next couple of fire seasons, just how reliable electric is.
I agree that is a concern. I think that possibly what we want to look at is, are there ways to incentivize using electric at the lower elevations because it's significantly more energy efficient these days? That's just the reality. And I think that that's what we're going to see coming in new codes three years from now. I think we will see a big move to all-electric. But I have the same concerns. I, I understand them.
I think as far as the language that I had suggested last week, I understand objections to having the six metric tons per carbon dioxide equivalent in there, but I think it's very important that we, that we can eliminate the language. I'm talking at the end of page two of the chair's submission and the bullet points that I put in the proposal last week. We could, on the second bullet point, could end it after the second use of 2030, right before the colon, just put a period there. I think it important that we set up at least a framework as to how this is going to be done to show we're serious. And I think, I think it's very important that we, we do show that Galaveras County is truly committed to the, to the state's performance standard and state that standard in our general plan and a general, a framework for how we're going to reach that standard without getting into the details of the specific measures that will be in our reduction plan. So I'd like to, I'd like to, to work on the interim provisions that are suggested by the chair and keep the language that's at the bottom of page two with the, I mean, I'm willing to eliminate the language that I've already.
Read the specific number.
But I think the, I think it's, I don't think we should go through right now what we think might be in the plan.
I think we should hear from all the experts.
Well, I'm hardly an expert, but I'll weigh in first.
Well, you've looked at a lot more than our plans than we have.
I, I'm fine with the language we talked about previously, you know, having the list of things that we would include is certainly optional. It's not necessary. I think we've come to that conclusion. So then it's really down to what do we want to do as an interim measure and that we're willing to commit to. And, you know, it's really, these are things that we, we could say we want to do and that we will do, you know, there's, we shall, I don't know if you want to add the, we're feasible language in some of these because I think in some cases it may not be feasible. You know, we have lands designated on our land use map that support future residential development that won't necessarily have a commercial component to that and may not be walkable for most people to existing commercial space. If we want to go back and revisit the land use map on some of those spaces, that's a different exercise, but so I think that we need to be careful about what we'd say in the policy and what we have shown on our map. The limitations on things that we can do with a building permit are a little more challenging carrying that from a discretionary tenancy subdivision map. Once that map is recorded, those conditions, you know, are, have been satisfied. And so unless we record some type of notice or restriction that requires us to pull that out, it's time that a building permit comes in from that specific subdivision, it's really easy to get those requirements lost if it's not something that is comprehensive applied to every residential building permit. So the first two bullets there would be challenging to apply, not that it can't be done, but I've seen many, many cases in the past where we had special provisions on this map for whatever reason, and over time that requirement just gets lost because institutional knowledge disappears, there's no record of, you know, we have better tracking than we did say 20 years ago. So that, you know, computerized, you know, permitting requirements, you pull up a screen on that parcel and all these notes come up, you know, it's getting easier to track that kind of stuff, but it still is easy to miss.
So I have a, just a suggestion here, which I had notes on my own, you know, I wrote it and then I modified it to myself. So I think that limitation on wood burning stoves to a single wood burning appliance per resident is something that could be applied to every building permit easily and would not even really be much of an impediment to most people. Most people are only putting one wood burning appliance in, if any, these days, but it's at least a statement that we understand that burning wood, while it's a, something we enjoy doing in rural areas, does contribute to diminished air quality and is a real problem for some people. So I see that that would be a difficult one to apply only to certain building permits.
If that's something that we want to do, maybe that becomes a separate measure that we'll adopt in ordinance that limits the use of wood burning appliances to one per resident or something like that.
Isn't that what we have?
Outside, we have to do that anyway. We have to adopt some type of ordinance that applies on building.
Yeah, that's how you have to do it. If that's something that we agree is a reasonable thing to do, I mean, that, it's just a pretty commonly done. I mean, I see it in other counties all the time, places that have bigger air quality issues maybe than we do. The all-electric, I think that's something I threw in there because I think that it is worthy of discussion. I don't know that we're in a position to do it at this point, but I definitely think that it's something that we're going to be forced to move toward in the future. We might not be prepared to do that immediately. It might not even make sense.
Maybe we should go through each one of these.
Yeah, I think that's what Peter's doing.
Third bullet, you know, that's a good idea. I mean, I really don't have any problem with any of these other, other bullets. There are some concerns about the, you know, the county's ability to do the things that the county says, you know, we're going to, you know, have more efficiency. You know, part of it is the economics and my understanding is that because of New Malonis reservoir and the electrical production facility, public offices get a really good deal from PG&E that we, that is better than putting solar panel on, you know, we could go 100% solar and we still get cheaper power by. solar, and we still get cheaper power by connecting to the grid. So it doesn't make sense from an economic standpoint to do that. And I suppose you could argue that higher electric power, assuming that's where it's coming from, is probably just as green, as, you know, less, I mean, it has its own impact, but as far as greenhouse gas production, you know, that's not necessarily an issue.
Yeah, the county receives its power through Calaveras Power, and it's so inexpensive that it is very difficult to make an economic argument for exceeding required efficiencies.
Yeah.
A question there. Does that impact the requirements of the California State Energy and Green Building Codes? I mean, do they--
No.
They don't talk about--
No.
--power source?
No, the requirements are the requirements for the efficiency of your build, of a new building, or a majorly retro--
So it's more insulation, that sort of thing, than--
Efficiency of equipment, it's all sorts of things, but to reduce your entire use of--
I understand.
It includes that reduction of water, but--
Well, the question is, though, does that impinge on the conversation you were just having about the county gets its electrical power cheaper?
No, if they don't, doesn't care.
Okay.
And the reason I didn't include anything about residential is the residential energy codes are, have become so stringent that there, it is not realistic to ask people to do better than code. The commercial codes lag quite a bit behind residential codes, and it is realistic to ask commercial buildings to do better. It's realistic in that it's economically feasible to do it, it makes sense to do it. Whether it's something we'd want to do is a whole different question.
Another question I have is, is the term residential communities, does it need to be defined? Are we talking about, you know, six or more, or, you know, I mean, are we going to, if we have a community of two, why they don't need to have a sidewalk in front of their place if there's no sidewalks around, right? I mean, I'm just--
Well, I'm only talking about, yeah, yes, it probably needs to be defined.
I'm not against--
No.
--any of these requirements.
No, I agree. It needs to be defined. Really talking about a large development.
I'm not sure, I have to ask Peter. You know, I don't know if we put in new residential communities of significant size, if we've solved any problem at all.
Do you guys want to weigh in? You're really, tell us what you're thinking.
We had a conversation earlier during the break about the standards, and Commissioner Latif suggested removing from his prior proposal the per capita emissions, and the state law actually says, "Don't use this," you know, "for your local standards." I think we were just talking about that, it's AB 32 statewide performance standard of 40% below--
It would be both.
Oh, okay, yeah. And AB 32. I don't really have anything else to say at this point, again, sort of getting back to the discussion we had previously, saying we're going to do this is, sort of meets the minimum requirements of what we want to do. Anything beyond that is, how much are we willing to commit to say this is, we're going to require this for, of the county? How much do we want to require of new development? And, you know, what's a reasonable standard?
I'm not sure what the sum total of your comment is.
So I think what, you know, maybe one of the things we want to look at is, so this was an exercise in, these are all these things, but really, our requirement is to come up with a greenhouse reduction plan. That's what we're committing to do. I don't, I have no real attachment to listing things that might be in that plan. I, you know, I think that will come out of the plan, and much of this will end up being in the plan, and probably things we can't even imagine right now. My concern is getting some interim measures in place. I'm fine with adding if feasible, and tweaking wording, and doing whatever we need to do here. I would like, and I understand what does residential communities mean, it's just something I made up, but I do think, you know, a complaint about the entire general plan and the EIR has been that we are allowing so much more development than is to be anticipated during the timeframe of this general plan, that this is our opportunity to, again, somewhat incentivize, encourage, direct that development to happen in a way that is more sustainable, and closer to existing communities or existing services, which it has been acknowledged throughout the plan is really our goal. So I think that every time it comes up, and we say, "Oh, no, but we don't want to say that," well, we do want to say that, that's what we're saying, is we really want to see development happen closer to community centers, without saying, "Absolutely never, we're never going to allow you to do anything different," even though we have provided a land use designation on your property that says different. Yeah, we need to accommodate both those things, but still be clear that our preference is to see that development happen close to developed community centers. I probably screwed that wording all up somewhere along the line, but, anyway, let's take one more round of comments from the commissioners, and then we'll have the public talk.
Okay. I'm still not in favor of the first bullet point on the interim measures, the all-electric. On the second bullet point, I think that's already required by the Air Pollution Control District.
Nope, there are no restrictions here.
Well, then our Graft Environmental Impact Report is--
Just not in Calaveras County, it is in many counties. Because it depends on what your particular issues are.
Well, we'll have to fix that when we get to DEIR, because it says that the CCA PCD provides standard mitigation measures, divided into several categories. There shall be a limit of one wood burning appliance per residence, and it shall be an EPA Phase II certified appliance.
I think you're suggesting that as a mitigation measure.
No, I don't think so.
It's not, I can tell you for an absolute fact, it is not the situation here in Calaveras County currently.
Well, then we're going to have to change the DEIR. But I don't have a problem with that. The next three bullet points, we do need to define new residential communities, and I'm not sure how to do that, if we're going to have any of these. And on the fourth bullet point about locating new residential communities within walking distance, et cetera, that's got to be modified with the "we're feasible," because it's not going to work everywhere.
Or to the extent feasible on each.
The last two bullet points, if I'm understanding things, those are achievable, if I understand the chair's comments, with respect to the codes regarding commercial buildings, which I think these would be. I am not in favor of including any of the language at the bottom of page two, which is Commissioner Latif's language. We went through this last time, I think this is all a matter for the experts. I am not prepared to tell them anything about how they're going to do their job, and I am not in favor of including any of that material. Insofar as the idea that we need to show a commitment that we're going to comply with state law, that's done, and the introduction is modified with the material that the chair has provided.
Bullet point one, I'm still, I'm not comfortable with. And two, bullet point two, I'm in, I agree, I think that if it's not a requirement, it needs to be a requirement. Residential communities needs to be defined. Commercial, commercial, properties or development, it needs to be more stringent, and this is acceptable. As far as the added language, Mr. Latif, as we redact a sentence behind the second 2030 is fine with me.
Yeah, as we usually do, I'd like to punt this to Peter, as well as-- --the new residential communities, and the feasibility language on these. I like, I like the substance of all of this. I do, I don't think we're ready to require the all-electric. So except for the first bullet point, I like the substance. I think the second, the wood burning is fine the way it is, but we need, we need to somehow define what we're talking about with residential communities. I think we could probably spend 20 minutes discussing that without reaching, I'd love it if you take a crack at trying to limit this. I think we have to give him some instruction, though, in that, are we talking, are we talking now, "Well, forget about the land use map the way it is, you know, these are new requirements," or are we telling Peter, "Make this work within the existing land use map," and then we will have to, I mean, feasibility language and things like that, and then we'll bite the bullet about whether we're going to amend the land use map in the future. So I'm in favor, and I am in favor of having the language at the bottom.
I'm in favor of hearing from the public, so would anybody like to speak?
Hi, Tom Hicks, CV Development Partners. I too am bothered by bullet number one. On the one hand, you're limiting wood burning fire, excuse me, what's that? You're eliminating wood burning fire, burning appliances, and--
Not eliminating, I'm more limiting them to one.
To one, right, I understand. But bullet number one limits propane, or any other substance, to a cooking appliance. How do you have a fireplace with an electric? It doesn't work. So you do at least include, you know, fireplaces with that as well. A lot of the communities around have propane farms already built into their communities, so some of these things that apply to, in the interim here, could be problematic. The size of the community, new residential communities, again, not being, not defined, are you not giving someone an advantage to develop smaller communities and do what you're trying to avoid, which is pocket developments all over? So I think you need to be careful about how you define that, and maybe it should be reversed, where you give an incentive for these types of things, as opposed to making it mandatory. I think the use of the word "shall" throughout all of these things is very problematic, because "shall," you're basically now deeming a lot of property not developable at all by these guidelines here, so I think you'd be worried about that. The point that was already brought out about PG&E and their new policies, we were having a meeting just the day before yesterday, talking about how that's going to affect existing communities already. So having your limited, limitation of electric only for heating and things like that, I think you're putting a lot of people potentially in jeopardy in that area. These goals of AB 32 are 2030 goals, and I think implementing these things so early, way before those goals, I mean, it should be, I think, as a policy to encourage them, I think that's fine, but implementing them before the state could create some issues, and I think particularly true in these interim categories here with all those points I just mentioned. Thank you.
I'm Will Moore in Rancho Calaveras. I got here late, I was at another meeting, but I hear some talk about wood burning here, so I have some information regarding that, and economic development.
First, with regard to the interim measures, I think it's important for people to realize, these are going to be in place for two years, so it's not going to be, not going to impact an overwhelming number of projects. The second thing, sometimes facts help us define things, and we're trying to define the size of the residential development that these would apply to. It may be helpful if Peter could bring, every year he does a report to the Housing and Community Development that lists all the projects, and it's by size, so you could get sort of a sense of, so how big are the projects that will be coming forward in the next couple of years? And you should maybe get a cutoff point, so that these policies would have some effect, but not be overly burdensome. So that might be one way of helping you define that difficult number. Thank you.
On the bullet point number one, what if there was an unknown catastrophe that you couldn't, wouldn't want to imagine, and you limited people to electric, and there was no electric, and they could have saved the food in their freezer, or their refrigerator, or their parakeet dying? I don't agree with that. On number two, residential, I, I think that people should be free to try to be spontaneous in their use of what works for them, especially in the event of an unknown catastrophe. On, third, on new residential communities, including parks and open spaces with plantings capable of carbon sequestration, I don't know what carbon sequestration is, but I have seen personally in Oakdale, a beautiful development that was with quite large homes, but very small yards, and a beautiful park, not in walking distance. And I've also seen that park be turned into more housing, and I think that is terrible. On number four, Francis Greenhorn Creek, I don't, I've never seen anyone, I've been over there a number of times, walking from Greenhorn Creek to any place to buy stuff Well, there's a lot-- Well, there's a lot to be said about a lot of this stuff, but I don't really agree with a lot of it. And I'm just not smart enough to bring it down. But there is something called human nature. And to get rid of plants and trees, so there is no yard waste impact to the landowner, thus reducing animal habitat and oxygen generator, does not make sense to me. Biodiversity is important to all living things, including us. And it's, and it's important to the trees. And there's an underground connection to all the trees within a 50-mile area. Mother Nature can jerk out a tree by the roots, trunk and all, which may fall on another drought weakened tree, toppling it. She can produce a drought or a wet year, which may impose a impact on tree mortality. And I'm still talking about human nature. Some people can kill poison oak with spray, which kills the trees, but not the poison oak, which comes back with a vengeance. Requiring oak mitigation standards is opposed to human nature. People wanting a better view, killing trees on others' properties to get either, either by air or other means. People trying to eliminate trees for supposed water they use.
I, I think you're responding to an item that's going to come up in a little bit.
I am, but it also, there are things on these bullet, bullet points that what I just said impacts what I, you know, on these.
But we're going to be talking about oak mitigation in a bit. So I think you're going to want to.
Okay, I'll just repeat it, but it also applies to what's here.
Okay.
Morning, Tom Griffin, D2. Just a couple of general comments and a couple of kind of specific ones on number one about all-electric bullet point. It would help with many of these bullet points, as well as a lot of other discussions around the general plan, if there were clearer definitions of people have been suggesting relating to development communities in terms of quantifying them in some more specific means than the general broad terms. And on the all-electric design, I would, being a person who lives off-grid, like to comment that one argument I have against that is, well, that would be not only cost prohibitive, but space prohibitive. To have enough solar panels to run an electric forced air heating system, it's insane. My neighbor just put in enough panels to charge his electric car. He's a huge solar farm just to power one car. And which would drive, point being, it would be a really carbon negative proposal for a lot of people because they would end up running their emergency backup generators all the time to do the most expensive, dirtiest way to create electricity imaginable to meet that requirement, which would make it counterproductive. That was pretty much my only comments on that. Thank you.
Perhaps our consultant has examples of interim mitigations from other communities that we haven't even talked about, that we should be considering.
Sure. Well, there's a whole host of measures that do get included as you go through the process of preparing a reduction plan. Usually they'll be fairly specific to the jurisdiction. In this case, the majority of the emissions are coming from a mobile source. So I think you're on the right path with direction toward future development being more walkable, to the extent that that makes sense. And then any measures that can bring down vehicle miles traveled would be, you know, where to, where to sort of target your, your reduction measures. Offhand, I can, I can probably come up with a couple here shortly, or follow up with a, with a list of, here's some that I would recommend for Peter to bring back, you know, later.
Okay, commissioners, are we ready to just hand this over to Peter and let him come back with something that it kind of responds to? I think there was general agreement on, let's not attack the all-electric thing now. Let's concentrate on the others. Let's define that where this is going to apply and make sure we have outs for places where it just doesn't make any sense.
We haven't, we, there's a split amongst the commissioners so far about including the language from last week, and I haven't heard from the chair on that as far as.
So I have no big objection to it being included, but I also don't feel that it's necessary because I think we're repeating information that the consultant who will be doing this work is going to be more than familiar with. And that also, if we put things in here, that there could be changes in what the best practices are. And possibly we're not quite up to date on that. So that we might be better off to let them do their job. Sort of the same reason, we wouldn't tell them what kinds of mitigations to consider because they actually know the list better than anything we're going to come up with. So I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Well, it's kind of hurting more polling.
I'd like to hear from, from our consultant on that, what your recommendation would be. Sorry.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. You know, my recommendation would be just the reference to the state laws that are we are required to adhere to. To me, pretty much cover all of those, all of those bullets. If you were to keep this similar direction, the only thing I would recommend is pulling out the per capita threshold, as the scoping plan specifically said, that that comes from a statewide average. And they encourage local jurisdictions to come up with their own targets to, to get toward that statewide average. But it's something that's more specific toward the inventory that you do create. And you can see where your major emission sources are. And then you come up with specific reduction targets that are specific to the county. So it would make more sense to not say what, what your threshold would be.
That's no longer in consideration.
So I, I believe that we have two folks who'd like to see that final section dropped. Is that correct?
I would like to have all of the final stuff, the Commissioner Ladish stuff, not in here.
Right.
He said he liked it, so.
You'd like to see it in there?
No, not in there.
Yeah.
If I understood.
So now I'm asking Commissioner Henderson.
As long as the metric tons are out, which we indicated, I don't see a problem with it being in there. I think, actually, I like it, so.
So given that it's kind of split, I am totally fine with leaving it in. I don't feel strongly, as long as we get our piece that we've all discussed taken out anyway, so. There you go. Peter, is there anything else you need from us?
With the interim measures, the second bullet about the wood burning appliances, one thing I wanted to address was the APCD's guidelines have that in there as a recommendation. And that was what was referenced in the EIR. So we have that as a recommendation right now, it's not a standard. If you want to make that a standard that then applies to, and that would be to projects, discretionary projects that exceed the threshold, that's one of the recommendations, one of the guidelines that they have, see where you can reduce impacts by limiting the number of wood burning appliances. If we wanted to make that a requirement for the county, then I think that would need to be a separate implementation measure. And if that's the will of the commission, I can certainly write that up as a separate measure. The residential communities is challenging. You know, unless I know what the threshold is, you know, you come up with anything. I personally have a problem with the term residential communities. I don't think a residential subdivision is a community. You know, a community is, you know, the interplay of the residences and the businesses and the schools and everything else. So I was just kind of a bugaboo about, you know, someone calling their subdivision a community, but.
I, I think that's exactly what I had in mind, is a community is a community, not just a subdivision.
And so if we're talking about residential development of a certain size, you know, I can certainly come up with that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where to draw that line, but I can look at, and maybe it was suggested by Mr. Fasino, that we look at projects. But the problem is, we have had so few in the last decade, that there's really not a, you know, a level that we can say, well, here's sort of our typical line. But I think there's, you know, I certainly have enough experience to sort of determine that, you know, projects of a certain size that would necessitate parkland and open space. And, you know, I mean, we want to have anything as walkable as possible.
Right.
But if you're doing two tannic or parcels out, you know, 10 miles from the nearest community, you're not going to make that walkable. So, you know, maybe there's, you know, there's some limit that we can, I can come up with. I'll try my best.
Yeah.
So if that's okay with what, you know, what I understand is, let's create a, a separate measure for the second bullet. I can incorporate, you know, modify the language of the rest of those bullets. And then, regardless of the consensus, or at least the majority that said, let's keep the, the modified language of the last portion that Commissioner Ladis had presented last week, and I can come up with that.
Peter, I think we could keep the provision for wood burning of all appliances, so reference to it here with a, with a cross-reference to your additional measure. I, I think, I think it's part of this is having the message, this interim message all put in the same place. But I certainly have no objection to your also mentioning wood burning appliances, you know, in a, in a separate implementation measure. I mean, it sounded as if you were talking about, you wouldn't list it in this one.
That's, that's what I was saying. And I, I just don't know that it really fits with the kinds of measures that we would apply on a project level basis. I mean, one, it may be something that we would need to do as a ways for them to meet the air pollution reduction requirements that we would analyze when we do the sequel analysis for a larger project. But in order to apply it on a building permit, by building permit basis, it needs to be an ordinance that is adopted by the county separately from this.
He's just saying an interim measure could be adopt an ordinance, blah, 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 in here, and then you also have it wherever else.
I, I don't, I don't see how it, how it relates. Having an interim measure that says, here's what we're going to apply to projects, but the directive is for the county to do something.
Right. It seems like a separate implementation measure.
It just seems like a separate measure to me. No, it's your, it's your opinion.
I'm, I'm fine with breaking it out. I, I think. I think it also needs to be clear, we're not trying to take anything away from anybody who already has something. And I think that there, potentially, we may want to provide some, because the housing element is looking at some alter, the possibility of having some alternative requirements for rural housing. We'd want to be careful that we didn't create a situation where we want to allow some flexibility there and that it's not allowed here, although I would think the one wood burning appliance might work, but it might not. It's possible that you would have, in that scenario, you could have a wood burning cook stove and some kind of wood burning heater, or I, I just think that's a possibility. And I, I'd want to make sure that we, we said, unless allowed by some other element of, you know, our housing element or.
I've got some more comments.
Okay.
First of all, on the, on the new residential communities bullet points, I'm concerned about the point that Mr. Hicks brought up, that if you have a, a size threshold involved, you're creating a kind of an artificial distinction that might push people to do things that we otherwise would want them to do, like limit their development and have limit to scattered developments. I don't like that prospect. On the wood burning appliances, I was previously under the impression that that was an air district requirement, and now I understand it's not. I am not in favor of this at all. There is a lot of wood on the ground with oak trees dying in this county, and it's sitting there. There's a lot of wood on the ground because of the butte fire, and it's sitting there. The best use of all of that wood is to do something with it, other than let it sit on the ground and attract Italian thistles. Or be even more fuel for the next wildland fire that comes around, and they will. The best thing you could do with that wood is use it, and one of the best uses of it is let people cut it up and burn it in their stoves. It's cheap, and it, it pollutes far less than the next butte fire is going to, or the others have. So I am not in favor of limiting people's freedom of choice on having their wood stoves anywhere in the county. That's just my view. I know I'm minority of one, but that's.
I don't think we were saying that they couldn't have a wood stove.
No, you're saying they can have only one.
Right.
Some people like a fireplace and a wood stove, both. When I grew up, we had a fireplace, a potbelly stove, and a trash burner on the gas stove. And we used them all. And I think people ought to have the choice to do that because personally, I think the pollution, if you will, that they contribute through these EPA certified stoves is minimal compared to what you're going to get with the next fire. That's my piece, I know I'm a minority of one.
So it's my understanding right now that this might be a compromise measure, is that fireplaces are not required to meet EPA two emissions levels. There are fireplaces that do meet those levels. And maybe what we want to look at is just, and I, I think the Green Building Code might be addressing this in the next, but maybe instead of eliminating, limiting it, we just want to say any wood burning appliance must be certified to EPA two, or whatever the current standard is, which is fairly, pretty low emissions, really. They've come a long ways.
Well, if they have to comply with the new EPA standards anyway.
They, fireplaces do not, or have not had to. I don't know in 2020, January 1 of 2020, that might be changing. So I can, I can check that. But traditionally, fireplaces have not had to comply, but wood stoves have needed to comply. There's a whole nother issue. There's, you know, fire pits outside, there's all of that, which we don't want to even begin to try to get involved with. So, you know, maybe this is all a good discussion, and in the end, we don't, we choose to not implement much of anything or some really limited subset. But the day is coming, we're going to have to do something about greenhouse gas emissions. And I think things that are clearly planning related, we should try to look at, as opposed to really individual tiny little things.
I agree.
And as I understand it, this limit on wood burning appliances applies to anybody building a house, whether it's a subdivision or not, across the board.
Right, a new ordinance would apply across the board. But would not require somebody to take something out that they already had.
I should, sure hope not.
So what about the fireplaces? Do we want? Do we want to have fireplaces mentioned in here?
I'm actually in favor of the one residential, because I too was raised with a wood burning stove, and that was the only source. We had one wood burn stove, heated a 2,200-square-foot house sufficiently. I think, you know, this is just talking about, you know, if it would be for a heat source, I think that would be a compromise if somebody has a cooking source, if you would, for, you know. And I agree, there is a lot of wood resources up there wasting, or a potential fire hazard. But we definitely have to get ahead of the game on putting some of these ordinance in so that we can meet the requirements for greenhouse gases. But, you know, using, I think if you have an average home, you're not going to have six wood burning stoves. I like to see how many cords of wood you're going to go through, you know, why you would need more than wood, one wood burning stove for a heat source. There were many times when I was a child that we had the doors wide open because the fire was too hot. So it's essentially just overheating the house. I mean, but I think this is an ordinance, would be a good ordinance, if you maybe change the verbiage, instead of wood burning appliance, maybe to a heat source, or a, because realistically, I don't know how many people in the county would have a wood burning stove to cook on. I mean, realistically, I don't know.
No, but we don't care what their one wood burning appliance is. That would leave it up to them to choose.
And this is for new construction, so I mean, existing. That's my comment.
I do think the question of fireplaces is a good thing to bring up, and whether a appliance includes that or not.
It does include it. Wood burning appliance includes anything that burns wood. That's the term used in most codes.
Great.
But I will look to see what the 2020 requirements are. Oh my God, let's put it to bed.
Or put it to Peter.
I'm so sorry. Maybe they don't want to give me any more drops. All I do is create a lot of discussion. I think maybe before lunch, we should take a quick look at that two-egg conversion measures. Do you think we can get that done, or should we wait?
I just want to make sure that we're done with air quality and greenhouse gas, other than me coming back with revisions to this reduction here.
We all hope so.
Well, I know that Rod needs to leave at lunch to get to another appointment. I want to make sure that we're done with that. So yes, let's move to maybe cover that. Quickly.
Point us to pages and such, please.
So in the packet that I provided either last night or this morning, whenever you got it, that revised document is.
Attachment five?
Yes, attachment five. So on this, at the top of the page is what was originally recommended, and on the bottom are my proposed revisions that create two separate measures regarding one about farm mapping, and the other would be for a mitigation of resource production and conversion.
I wonder if we could postpone this until after lunch, so I really haven't had a chance to look at this, and this is a very important issue.
Sure. We also still need to take another look at the oak.
When you go back to oak, then I think we'll be done with the conservation of open space.
Are we all ready to take a break for lunch?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So that.
And just a reminder, Commissioner Henderson has to leave at 4:00 today, so we're going to end the meeting today at 4:00, so we have the full commission here for discussion.
So could we all be back at a quarter to 1:00, and we'll be done by 4:00? Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Gina, does that work for you? Thank you.